Hey everyone, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Yes, I can. Wait, now I can't Julie.
Julie, you're on mute.
There we go. And I'm admitting Russ.
Sure you want to do that Judy, Julie?
Absolutely, no meeting without him.
That's right.
Yep, Russ, can you hear us yet?
I can.
Oh, good, awesome, okay.
Yeah, it's a large file, huh?
Oh, yeah.
I think we need to prepare for a person in-person meeting in March. Those these files are big.
They are big, and as you know, the reducer added space instead of taking away, which yeah, that was something that's still being worked on.
Okay, well, we're here, right? Everybody's ready to go, so welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission for February twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, I'll start with a call to order. John, you want to begin?
Sure, John Smolga.
Garnet, stop, stop, no, can't play with that.
Sue Fitch.
Rob Horgan.
Kathy Roz.
Melanie Jalen.
Here, are you there?
Sierra was here, let me check and see if she still is.
She's here, I just don't hear her.
And then, uh, Chris, you're here, right?
Yeah. I didn't know we were going in order or what?
Uh, we just kind of take turns.
Okay.
Yep, yep, Sierra is here, I don't know if she can hear us.
Yeah, I think she can hear us, but we can't hear her.
Okay. Sierra? You, uh, according to this, you have a mic. Alright, she's working on it.
Well, we do have a quorum. Mm-hmm, um, is Sue here, Sue Fitch?
Sue is.
Okay, so we have all our regular members um, here tonight. So, our first order of business is to approve the minutes of special meeting from January twenty-third. It was a special meeting because we didn't approve our uh, twenty twenty-four schedule beforehand, it was a regular meeting, but it's really a special meeting. Um, anybody have any comments on these minutes?
I, Russ, I'm just abstaining because I, um, had to leave partway through the meeting.
Okay.
And I wasn't, wasn't here, Russ, so I'm abstaining also.
Okay. Anybody else?
I came in late, Russ, so I missed most of it. So I'm abstaining.
Okay. With no comments, does somebody want to approve this minutes of the special meeting from January? Rob?
Rob, you don't have a mic.
Yeah.
Ah, sorry, I'll move to approve the minutes of the, uh, January meeting.
Do I have a second? Sierra, you want to try?
How about a hand signal?
Yeah, Sierra, just raise your hand if you approve, if you second.
Russ, can I second it?
Yep.
Okay.
There we go. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next. What's next?
Okay, um, next we're moving into old business. Um, the pump house from Stone Ledge Sam, they withdrew.
Right.
Yep, so actually I'm letting two more people in. I'm letting Sierra in another way. Um, so let me scroll down there. And so there's their withdrawal letter.
Okay.
And they are on later on in the agenda with the new application.
Right.
Okay, so I'll skip over, um, want me to move over to the next one?
Yeah, can I see the agenda again?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So the first one's withdrawn, so we're moving to sixty-five Minor Bridge Road. Construction of a single-family eight-bedroom home with sanitary system, well, grading driveway and other related uh, things, report on the site walk. Um, this everybody may or may not know, this is on Minor Bridge Road. How big, uh, Paul Shimansky is the engineer on this, so Paul, I'll hand it over to you.
Hey, good evening.
You hear us and everything?
Oh, yeah, clear as day, clear as day, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm talking to Sierra, but I-
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, she's, I gotta make sure she's she's on, and I gotta get this toy out of my dog's mouth, because Garnet, no. Hi, Joe. Okay. Sierra, are you good? I don't think she could hear or see us, so.
I'm good, I can hear you.
Oh, there you-
No, I mean Sierra, I'm worried about Sierra, because she's a voting member on this, and if she's not connected.
Yeah. She just said, yeah, she can hear.
Okay, alright, so you're good, Sierra? Alright, Paul, go ahead.
Okay, uh, good evening again, for the record, Paul Shimansky, professional engineer, representing the applicant by D O E. Uh, property's located at sixty-five Miners Bridge Road. Um, this is owned by, uh, two brothers who are, are building a new residence for the both of them to share with their families and their children, uh, they own about a hundred and fifty acres between Bridgewater and Roxbury. Um, so they're proposing this as their main residence uh, so that they can, uh, spend a large amount of time here with their children and their wives. Uh, so the proposal calls for the construction of a new driveway, which you can see is coming in on the northern part of the property, uh, it traverses down in a southeasterly direction, there's wetlands to the east side of the driveway, which you can see on the screen to the right in the dark blue. The hundred-foot upland review area is shown in light blue. So the driveway was kept out of the upland review area in its entirety. If you look to the left portion of the map, the west, uh, that's the proposed septic system, which will be a-
Sorry, this is so, I'm being a pain in the neck, don't mean to interrupt you, oh, you have the, I, I'm missing where you're showing where everything is, so sorry. Okay, I just was asking if you could point it out, but I guess I missed it. If you could-
It's not, it's not my screen, so I, I don't think I can take control of someone else's screen.
Oh, okay, is there, okay, any way we can do that? We can, we can try moving it around, okay.
Julie, maybe if you zoom in a little bit on the house for now, or-
Or, or what, well, he said the driveway, just the driveway is-
So the driveway is to the upper portion of the map where Julie's, uh, hand is, so right there and going up. So that was what I was speaking to before, and if you scroll further up the screen, the, the upland review area is on the right-hand side, that's the light blue line. That's the wetland line right there that Julie's pointing to right now, and then a hundred feet off of that is the upland review area.
So, so Paul, for clarity, is the driveway the same as the, um, the old, the old rail bed, or is it different?
No, it's not, it's not.
Okay.
Where, where we walked in is not the driveway.
Okay, it's a little, it's a little toward, more towards Bridgewater, okay.
Right, comes right up Minor Bridge Road, way up from the Falls Park, although we parked at the park and then walked in from there.
Okay, gotcha.
That's just the wood road that's always been there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, see-
And where you entered, and where you entered is, um, where the light blue line is, where it's showing, uh, detention pipe. We walked in around there.
Gotcha. Thanks. Yep.
Well, is, is there, because I went driving and looking, and is there a center stake for the, these, this driveway even marked anywhere?
Yeah, the driveway's fully staked, the center line of the driveway was staked.
You have to walk way in to find this, correct, or I didn't see anything off the road, I didn't see anything off the road at all.
So, if, if you drive in from the new house they built, the guest house-
Yeah.
Continue past it on that driveway, it kind of connects to the proposed new driveway?
I was looking and I was trying to see a center point and I couldn't find one, so anyway, but I was asking, okay.
Mm-hmm. Uh, so the driveway continues down in a southerly direction. Uh, there's a port-cochere in the front portion of the house, or the northerly portion of the house. And then the driveway wraps around to the west side of the house, or the left side of the house, where there's a garage with a side entry garage under, so that's the port-cochere right there. And then to the left portion of the house, the driveway continues down around, into a garage under garage, um, the house itself is shown in the solid hatched color. Uh, there is a, uh, decks, two decks, uh, deck off the rear, uh, lower right-hand side rear of the house. Stormwater management for the driveway, uh, is handled by a series of level spreaders and stone swales on the up gradient sides. The roof runoff is handled by a series of infiltrators. Uh, those are, uh, at the rear of the house, there's rechargers taking the roof runoff. And then to the lower left-hand portion of the home, there's also an infiltration trench and level spreader to take into account the driveway runoff in the area of the garage. On the right-hand side, uh, of the house, we're taking the roof runoff from the, uh, front portion of the house and putting that into an infiltration trench, which acts as a level spread, high-level overflow level spreader as well. We're disturbing approximately, uh, four of the hundred and fifty acres on the site.
For the house itself?
The entire limit of disturbance, including the driveway. And septic.
And, and can you just talk to the septic?
Yeah, the septic's in the, uh, upper-left portion of the screen, uh, so it's a pump system. So, uh, it's an eight-bedroom septic system, it's located within the existing cleared area. There's a, uh, existing wood road that comes from the barn up above that comes down here, a grass mowed path in the leaching field is basically right within that path. Uh, and the, then there's a tree line. And then within the tree line is the hundred-foot upland review area, so we have no disturbance within the upland review area in the area of the septic system.
And the dream, and the stream, I'm not seeing it, right, so it's the river, but then there's that stream off to the-
It's, it's basically where, uh, you see the footing drain detail on the left side of the screen. Um, that's approximately where the stream is.
And how far is that from the septic?
A hundred and fifty feet. So the septic's not within the upland review area, it's about fifty feet past it.
Well, two hundred feet is our upland review area for the Chappag River, Paul.
I know, but I offset it a hundred from the stream, because that's not the Chappag.
Oh, right. No, that's Camp Brook.
Yeah, so I offset two hundred for the house off, off of the Chappag, and then I offset a hundred feet wherever there were wetlands or unnamed non-Chappag River named watercourses, sorry.
And can you define the water elevation, so, you know, the, 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 the the shoreline changes, of course, you know, there, there's drawdowns, there's high water, so what is this water elevation and what are we measuring from?
So that, that water elevation is the point at, at which it's surveyed. Um, the property line itself is, uh, what's referred to as the two-ten elevation. Um, so that's basically the high-water mark at which First Light could flood to, uh, based on their Federal Energy Regulatory Commission license.
This is the high water, this right here, this one ninety-seven, one ninety-eight roughly rounding up, is the high-water mark for, um, First Light, is that correct?
No, the, the, that, that's the typical water elevation.
Okay, so where's the high water, where's the high-water mark?
Couple of feet above it. In that, that blue dash.
Yeah.
The blue dash.
Their, their typical, their typical pond elevation does not exceed two hundred.
Okay, so this is one ninety-eight, so two feet higher, okay.
Yeah, so, so basically in the summer months, they impound water up to an elevation of two hundred at its highest typically. And then they utilize that to release when there's a large demand for electricity, for instance, when it gets hot, the electrical demand increases for air conditioning. Um, so at that point, they would then do a release down river at the Chappag River and lower it to generate hydroelectric, electricity.
Hey, Paul, did we approve like a new dock and everything on this a few years ago?
Yes, you did, um, so off the screen, uh, to the right, kind of where the label is, S T R M one there. Um, th- you approved, uh, I think it was a kayak rack, a fire pit, a sitting area and a dock. Um, the only thing that they actually did, uh, was clear the path and put a kayak rack in.
So, Paul, question for you, um, you know, on our site plans, we like to see the whole property, why don't you show us the whole property and, you know, where, where the house would be on there?
I'm not following, what do you mean, John?
Well, the maps that you submitted here only show a small portion of the property, I mean, we, we have to take a, I mean, we should take a look at, uh, you know, all possible alternative sites, um, considering that this is right up on top of the Chappag River. So it'd be good to have a topo map of the property.
A hundred and fifty acres?
Yeah, well, okay, I'll tell you what, I'll go easy on you, how about the sixty-seven acres or sixty-six for, that this one lot is?
So, so my understanding, I mean, you can correct me if I, I'm wrong. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to show a larger, a larger map, so they own six properties, so this is one of the six or seven properties that they own. So, as it relates to a prudent and feasible alternative analysis, my understanding of the regulations and the statute is, is that falls when the commission makes the finding that there's the likelihood of an adverse impact to the resource. So right now, we're maintaining our activities. The, the house itself is a hundred and twenty feet away from the Chappag. The septic system's a hundred and fifty feet away from the water course. The driveway itself is about a hundred and twenty feet away from the wetlands.
Right, but we regulate two hundred feet from the Chappag, so you're in there.
That's correct.
Yep.
But I also say what John's saying is, is that there's a lot of acreage on this, and we also have to be looking at if there is a feasible alternative for placement of the house.
Exactly.
If the commission makes a finding that you believe what I'm proposing is likely of causing an adverse impact to the resource, so what specific concerns do you have of, I, I'm just speaking to your regulations. The prudent and feasible alternative analysis comes in when you make that finding. So if you have specific concerns that what we're proposing will cause an adverse impact to the Chappag, please let me know so I can address it.
Well, I'm, I'm just talking about usually when we get an application, you know, the the applicant will show us the entire property.
Entire parcel, correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I can show you a tax map with the LiDAR contours and the N R C S wetland soils without a problem for the next meeting, that's not an issue.
Well, that's fine, that's fine, and then where, where you're proposing the house is, so we can get a better look at that.
Yeah, that's not a problem, John.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm asking, okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Paul, is there a landscaping plan for this? That would show like where the lawn go down to the, where the lawns will be and all that plantings?
They want to have very minimal lawn, but what I'll do in advance of the next, hold on one second, I'm just writing down John's, um, stuff so I can get that for him. What I'll do for the next, in advance of the next meeting, Rob, is get the limit of lawn and, uh, get some landscaping as it relates to it, they're not looking to do anything down by the water. Um, so I'll clarify that. And also, and also look at what I could do for a, um, you know, one of the things we've done on other properties. Um, I'm thinking of, uh, down by, uh, I forget the road, Ch- not Chalbys, but the dirt road going to, uh, sixty-seven there. We've done, uh, physical barriers uh, between the wetland and the home, so let, let me think about something like that as well.
Yeah, because I think one of my, one, a concern I would have would be pollutants. Um, that would, you know, because it's uphill of the, of the wetlands, um, that would run downhill into the water. Fertilizers, weed kills, things like that.
Yeah, they, they want very minimal lawn, so let me touch base with the landscape, uh, designer who did the barn and the architect, and let me give you, uh, clear details as it relates to that and how that will be delineated. Um, so that's not just a temporary delineation, so to speak, of the lawn, so you wouldn't have creep over time, which we know can occur.
And then, uh, my other question is, we approved years and years ago a very large house.
Yep, Del Ron Dina.
Yeah, and I think they even, because I walked this property today, and there's an area of disturbed, like kind of a flat area with boulders that had been pushed down, like the site was prepared for that house?
No, no, Garrity mined this property, he took all the gravel off of it. So if you look, if you look up on that area, he took all the gravel out of there until he got to ledge up on the top.
Where, where's the area?
Right where, uh, Julie's cursor is, that was a whole gravel pit that Garrity mined for a long time.
It's actually above that area, isn't it? It's above that, there's a very flat area above, right?
Yeah, right there, she, he took all the material out of there, so you can see exposed ledge in that area.
But I think that's where the Ron Dino house was proposed.
Yeah, I wasn't involved, um, but I know they proposed a large house on the property, they owned it, and then, uh, another family owned it before, uh, the Levin brothers bought it.
And just for, uh, you know, is there a reason they're not entertaining that, that's, that area?
Yeah, they, they want to be close, close to the water, they each have three or four children, um, who are young, they're anywhere from like three to eight years of age, and the reason they bought this property, uh, was because the brothers themselves had grown up on a property that had a large amount of land with woods. And they were very, uh, heavily into water sports, one of them uh, basically got their start in their career uh, by teaching, uh, water scheme, uh, to who ended up becoming their boss and who helped them, uh, to start their career. So they have an emotional, long-term attachment to their family's water. Um, so that's why they purchased this property was to be able to enjoy it, so the the house itself is designed so that there's a, basically a common living area in the center portion of the house. And then the wing on the right is for one of the brothers and his family, and the wing on the left is for one of the brothers and his family for their sleeping quarters. So they, they, they are adamant about the proximity to the water, because that's what they grew up on when they were younger.
Well, you could, you could add proximity to the water, you don't have to be crowded up. I mean, if this house was moved back, you could put all the stormwater stuff further from the river to protect the river in the event of the storm events that we've all been experiencing. Now, you say that, in the light of, uh, an impact, if there's a feasible and prudent alternative, then the commission has to weigh in on that. And there will be an impact, that's my opinion. You, you have an outfall of stormwater right on the bank of the river, and this, in my opinion, there's no reason for that. There's plenty of land. If you push this house back, you still have the view they have. And there needs to be more protection given the storms that we've had, to ensure there won't be an, an impact. But I think this is a very complicated application. And I think that the commission needs to consider hiring its own consultants for peer review, one, one environmental, one engineer, because there is an environmental end to this. Uh, that the environmental consultant will say, I'm not a expert at the engineering. And then there's a massive stormwater review, not only with the house, but with the driveway. There, you know, somebody needs to look at all the details. So that's up to the commission, whether the commission, I'm just telling the commission, it's up to you whether you, um, want, want to have the applicant uh, agree to pay for consultants to have a peer review of this. And I, I think it's, it's absolutely uh, essential to make sure this plan is well looked, thought of. Not saying the house can't stay where it is, Paul, I haven't made any-
Oh, no, I understand, Russ, so then, Russ, just one question, because I'm, I'm okay with that. Um, do you think it would be more prudent, though, for us to retain uh, an environmental person to review it first, prepare a report, and then your guys could review that as opposed to, uh, you know, so then he's looking at our plan, because he, our consultant may make specific recommendations that I would implement. And then you guys can have your guys peer review that, does that seem to make sense?
Well, that makes all the sense in the world, because we don't hire somebody and then they design it, you know what I mean?
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, so that's why-
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
I'm totally, I'm totally cool with it, but I think it, just to make most efficient use of everyone's time, um, that may be the best route to go if you're okay with that.
Yes.
Okay.
And the Ron Dina application, unfortunately, we don't have it anymore, because we purged all our files over ten years old, that was in nineteen ninety-five.
Uh-
It's that long ago, wow.
Yeah, I was shocked. But the, the house, everything was outside the two-hundred-foot buffer from the river. Now, I'm not saying that it needs to be looked at. Uh, y- your plan here could be appropriate, but I, I'm sure you agree with me, we have to be careful, and we-
Oh, yeah. I know, I, I'm, I'm a very open person. I'm, I took very detailed notes on all your guys' comments regarding this application. We'll retain an environmental person to look at the impacts from environmental perspective. We'll get that report to you guys, and then you guys can, um, retain your people to review it.
Okay.
All right.
Paul, I have a quick question. I don't know. Just curious, is, are they proposing, is this gonna be as, oh, oh. Two-story house or a single level house?
Two-story house.
All right, thanks.
And, and Paul, I know the answer to this, but this pump system obviously is going to be on a generator.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay. And if something failed, I mean, are there checks that stuff?
Yeah, so the, uh, great question, Rob. The, uh, the pump chamber itself has liquid storage. Of four to five hundred gallons, so it would have days and days of storage. And if, say, the generator failed. There's, uh, always the ability for them to leave the property after four or five days if they had to, or just start using the woods like we used to way back in the day.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's what I've done.
What did he just say? Are we gonna have him jump in the river to go?
No, not the river, that's. Hundred and fifty acres of woods. The solution to pollution is dilution in the woods.
And the kids are gonna do that no matter how.
That's right.
Any other questions for Paul? The commission has thirty-five days to decide whether this is a significant activity and whether there should be a public hearing held. Um, we can make that decision tonight, or we can make that decision after the next meeting. Probably better to make that decision at, at the next meeting. Um, when, when we have more information, because this, this is the first night. We're really supposed to accept it. Uh, go do sight walks, which we've already done, but some people haven't seen this that may wanna go, go take a walk. Paul, is it okay if people park in the park, parking lot and take, walk the wood road, because everything's clearly state?
Yeah, just, just give me a call so I can be there, um, because, uh, the, uh, from an insurance perspective, they want to make sure that. I'm escorting everyone, so that's all. You don't have, you don't have to talk to me. I just want to make sure if you get hurt, we can get you out of there.
Right, so anybody.
I would like to, I like to make small talk, but if you don't want to, you don't have to.
Anybody who wants to go see this could email me and then I'll connect with Paul.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, now, anybody? We, we good with this plan?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, Russ and I have to drop off, so thanks.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Okay, next one.
Next is Stone Edge Sam. For their, uh, the site visit for the house site.
Good evening again, for the record, Paul Simansky. Oh, sorry.
I'm just trying to get everything. There we go.
So at the, um, the last meeting, at which I was not able to attend, but Spencer from my office did. Uh, there was a really good recommendation made by Rob, I believe it was, as it relates, uh, to the roof runoff, uh, from the proposed home. So he'd asked that we can, my understanding is asked that we consider tying into. The underground storage tanks as it relates, uh, to irrigation and for fire suppression. Um, so what we've done is we've removed our activities that were along the proposed driveway on the top portion of the plan. And instead, we've shown piping now on the left-hand side. You can see the blue line. And that goes to our new, uh, pump house location. So earlier in, in the night, it was noted that we withdrew the pump house location. And that was at the time, uh, located within the upland review area. And later on your agenda, I think we have an inquiry form. As it relates to the new pump house, which is now located, uh, about two hundred feet away from the wetlands itself. So now the runoff associated with the home, uh, runs into. The irrigation tanks as opposed to going into rechargers. So that's the major modification we've made as it relates to the house application.
Good job, Rob. That's called sustainability.
That's awesome. Yeah, no, Spencer thought it was a great idea, Rob. He told me right away the next morning, so we, we got right on it.
So Chris and I took a walk here. I, I don't see any problem with this, with the pump house or with the house. Uh, it's all on the top, it's flat, it's away from wetlands. The harder, hardest part of this whole development was the driveway. And I, I think the driveway issue personally, I've been taking a look at it. I, I think it's taken care of. I think the additional drainage that they put in. Seems to be working pretty well. So, Chris, did you have any comments on this?
No, not really. Um, I mean, it's wide open, it's flat, there's. I don't, I don't see any way that it impacts anything.
Okay. So Paul, you just submitted this tonight, right?
No, that, this has been pending for a couple of months now.
Okay, okay.
The only thing was, we submitted the revised, so we there too ago, incorporating Rob's suggestion.
Anybody have any questions for Paul?
Uh, now I get, I got a question for you, Russ. The, uh, the pump house that you're talking about, is this the? The one that we were concerned about the amount of water being pumped out of the ground?
Yes, and Paul, you retained a hydrologist.
Yeah, I got that report to Julie last week. We can go over that, John, if you'd like, as part of the pump house line on the agenda.
Sure, yeah.
Well, why don't we go over it now, because it's really part of the house application?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, we can discuss it. So we retained, um, BL Companies, uh, which is a. A large firm in the state of Connecticut. So their, uh, hydrogeologist is Sam Haydock. He's a principal in the firm. So as part of this, he reviewed the, uh. Hydrogeology of the site. So he did a site walk, he looked at the property, he performed a. Uh, a demand analysis, uh, which was two point two million gallons, uh. A year of demand. He then reviewed what the input would be from the property as it relates to the size of the property. So the actual contribution that the property provides to the aquifer. Is twelve point two million gallons a year. So we're basically providing six times. Contributing six times to the aquifer, which we're removing. He then reviewed the geology of the site. And confirmed that the water course running along the easterly side of the property that comes from Topland Farms. That there's no bedrock contribution, uh, into that, that water course, because it dries up. In the summer months to almost nothing. Um, so there's no concern that that water course would be reduced. Because of the well drawdown. He then reviewed. The well yields on this property as well those of abutting properties and. His concluding, uh, paragraph in his very long report was that. Based upon the findings of this water system impact analysis, BL Companies concludes that the onsite bedrock wells. Have the potential to provide water supply to the project without adversely impacting the local aquifer. Or the onsite wetlands and the stream that runs along the eastern boundary of the site.
Did we get a copy of that report?
We did.
Okay, I, I didn't see it, sorry.
I have not seen it either. And this is Julie. Um, I can check with Karen and see if it was sent to her.
Yeah, Fri- Friday at two, uh, a little after two o'clock.
Okay.
You want me to pull it up on the screen and I can quickly go through it?
Um, oh, how many pages, Paul?
Well, we can pull over the summary page, that's the important part.
Yeah, I'd like to get into the meat of it a little bit, but that, you know.
Well, I just have one question about the two, the two million gallons of water. That's per year?
Yeah.
And that's the demand of the property? The pools? Or is that what it could use if we were in a drought situation? I mean, how do they, how does he come up with that, that number?
So that's based on looking at what the watering needs were the last several years, uh, with the plant being associated with the driveway. Um, so basically. If you think about it, the majority of the year, there's no irrigation demand because it's not a growing season. So the actual growing season itself is from, uh, about June to September. Uh, that's on the order of thirteen to fifteen thousand gallons a day if there's no rainfall. Um, if we have a year like we had last year, uh, there's little to no usage of irrigation at all. So that demand significantly diminishes to about ten percent at most.
And is that roof drainage system, is that tied into all five of the tanks or just one of them?
All five, and then there's a high overflow out of it.
Because I did like a, a quick calculation on a twenty thousand square foot roof system. A one-inch rainfall would produce about twelve thousand gallons.
That's correct, yeah. And we figured, and then what I was figuring, Rob, is, you know, like ninety percent of all rainfall events are about an inch or less. Um, but we've been, as you know, we've been getting those larger rain events, so then we have the opportunity to fill more than one tank, which is why they're all getting tied in.
If I could ask, Paul, um, how are, how are their pumps going to be set up? Are they gonna be, have the capacity to accept that kind of rainfall, or are the pumps gonna be topping those tanks off every day?
The, uh, tanks get, the tanks are on a float system, um, so typically there's a, a twenty percent. Reserve capacity on the top of the tank. I talked to Alan Werner, Jr. He's the one who manages the current water system and will be managing the new water system. Um, so what he said he can do is they have. The, this, he does some crazy stuff with his, uh, water flow control stuff now, so he can tie it into the weather. So when we have rains proposed, we can allow the tanks to be drawn down. So that they're, uh, not at eighty percent capacity, so that then they have the ability to get filled with the rainfall. Um, because, and we feel comfortable doing that, because when the rain's proposed, our irrigation demand is limited. So we have no issue lowering our tanks through normal usage, so that then the rainfall can be utilized to do the refill.
Okay, great.
Julie, where, where are we at on this application? Is this two months?
No, no, um, the pump house is brand new this month, because they withdrew the old one, yes. Um, the house itself was, uh, this is, was submitted in January.
So we, we could go to March if we need to.
Yes.
And the reason why I asked, John, do you feel it's important you want time to read, uh, Sam's report?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to take a look at it and, um, you know, it's, like you said, it, the pump house is tied to the house. We just got the application for the pump house tonight, so we can approve that, correct?
No, it's non-regulated, actually.
Oh, that, that's right, that's right.
Well outside and, and John Cody could approve that. Uh, tonight, but John Cody could approve something like that.
Okay, did you read the report, Russ?
No, I, I haven't had time.
All right, I think we should.
I, I think I'd like time, Paul, if that doesn't mess up your schedules.
Uh, give me two seconds, hold on one second.
Yeah.
Just making a quick communication.
Yeah, I mean, we have time anyway. If it was submitted in January for the house, we have till March.
Yeah.
So I think we should take the time, read that report, so we could have questions next meeting. And next meeting will be, you know, the deadline to, to make a decision.
Yeah, the only thing I could ask is if, if you guys could get me the questions, uh, a couple of weeks ahead of time, so if you have any, I can ask Sam. And he can answer them in advance of the meeting for you.
Absolutely. Julie, if you could email that to me and John and anybody else who will email you and request that, that would be good.
Nope, I will send it out, I will, uh.
And I'll follow up with you, Julie, tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. So next month, we could, we could approve everything or whatever. We'll have questions and go from there.
Thanks.
What's next?
Okay, next we are looking at.
What, Paul, the only engineer in the town? We're crying out loud?
No, Brian's here tonight, too.
I didn't want to work on this project, it's for my dad.
That's actually where we're going next. This is new business, brand new tonight also. Oh dear. What is everybody looking at? Because I am looking at nothing.
Mr. Senior, the, Mr. Senior has an application in.
Yeah, this may even be his first inaugural Zoom login on his. He looks like Mr. Wilson, only half your face is there, Dad. Put your iPad down. Oh, there we go, he's full of technology.
Okay, let me. Make that a little bit bigger and we'll get down to our maps.
Thank you.
Well, is that property anywhere near a wetland other than across the street?
Across the street is the nearest, yeah. So we got the, um, if you look, Paul Simansky, for the record, again, if you look at the bottom of the map. The, uh.
Don't you have a conflict of interest?
You should be giving me condolences, not discussing conflicts of interest.
If you get the client mad, he could cut you off.
Decades ago. So the subject property is located at two thirty Baker Road. Um, Second Hill Brook is located across the street along the old Orzac Farm, uh, that Miss Coffin owns now. Um, so the property itself, the only regulated area, there's a little slice along the frontage of the property. Um, so the, uh, proposal is to demolish their existing home. And they're gonna construct a new home, uh, closer to their pool. And then they're proposing a barn at the rear portion of the property. Um, all the activities are outside of the upland review area.
And this is a one-floor house?
Unmute yourself there, uh, Pops. Top of the screen. Says mute.
Yes, one-story house, Russ.
Okay, yeah, I know why that is, right?
Yeah, that's it, we're getting old, buddy.
Is, is it the same footprint, or is it?
No, it's, it's further north from where the existing home is. So the, the northerly part of the existing home is now the. It's now the southerly part of the new home.
And roof drainage?
Uh, it's just, uh, to the ground so it can infiltrate. Th- this is a bank run gravel here. So it infiltrates extremely fast. And then what we did for the, uh. Uh, for the barn, that's just gonna infiltrate as well up in the back. Uh, so it's just gonna have, just roof runoff with no roof cleaners.
Any questions?
Just erosion fence and, uh, spoils area?
Uh, we could add silt fence on the down gradient side of the existing home, uh, up to the existing driveway, that's not a problem. And then we can just have, where are you gonna put the stockpile data up behind the pool?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Having heard none, I make a motion to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Congratulations, Sad, you can make.
Thank you, guys.
That was fun.
First time for everything for me.
Okay, this, the next application.
The next one, we're going to Thirteen Tunnel Road, and Paul, you're still up.
Okay, hey, guys, good evening again. For the record, Paul Simansky, professional engineer, uh, representing the Carter family. Uh, subject property is located on Tunnel Road. Um, so this is part of the, uh, Carter estate, so to speak. Uh, they've worked overtime to ease the majority of their properties, uh, back about ten or fifteen years ago. I think we used about. Uh, back about ten or fifteen years ago, I think we used about four or five hundred acres of land. So they, they kept some land that was unencumbered. So if you look here, this portion of the property, uh, the northern portion where it says conservation area number three. That's sixty-four acres that we have under easement. Um, so we left this area to the south unencumbered. The Shipog River, uh, basically bisects the property as it exists, uh, which is to the left of the proposed home. There's a wetland system, uh, to the right of the home on the screen, which is labeled Wetlands. There's an existing, uh, wood road off of Tunnel Road, which they're proposing to utilize as their driveway. It goes into the site. It's, uh, relatively on grade, uh, in its entirety. There's two, two little spots of about sixty to eighty feet each, uh, where it's steeper than fifteen percent. So we're doing some regrading in those areas to reduce the grade. And they're proposing a pool with a little cabana. The whole, uh, detached barn and the yoga studio, which is close to the river. Uh, as part of this, they have a septic system, uh, and a well as well. There's currently an existing home which John Carter lives in. Um, that's going to be for his children and then him and his wife are moving into this, this home. And his father still lives on another portion of their property.
Well, these conservation areas, what kind of conservation is it, four ninety or?
No, 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 this is a filed conservation easements and, uh, I forget what. So when we did these easements, it's in three towns, it's in New Milford, Washington and Roxbury, because it's so extensive. Um, but basically it allows, uh, no activity except for passive trails.
Could that be lifted in the future?
No, it's in perpetuity.
Really?
Yeah, it's not, so, so Public Act four ninety, for anyone who's not aware, that's a program at the state level. Where you agree to put land in either open space forestry or farming. Um, basically you commit to leaving it in there for ten years. If you remove it in less than a ten-year time period, you pay a penalty on removing the land because you get a reduction in taxes. In this case, uh, we did a conservation easement, which is in favor of one of the local land trusts. I forget if it was Steebrock or Roxbury or both, I'll, I'll get clarification for you guys on it. And it's in perpetuity, it's forever. So as part of this, they have a obligation to monitor the property once a year where they go out and ensure the terms of the easement are being enforced. And I'll get you the easement language as well that's filed on the land records.
Any questions from the commission? Uh, do you have, do you have piping on the wood road? Cause there is a small intermittent stream that.
So that thing you guys discussed at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Right at the entrance, we have a pipe that goes underneath the driveway to convey the water from the uphill to the downhill side. Well, the.
How big, how big is the house?
Uh, I don't know the square footage off the top of my head, let me, uh, pull it out and I'll get you an approximate. Were you saying something, Rob? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, the, uh, wetland review area you have marked at a hundred feet. It's, isn't it two hundred from the Shipog?
Yes, so we, uh, I think we then show the two hundred behind it in light blue. So we have a dark blue and then we have a light blue. So there's, so, so let me explain. So Julie, can you go up in the upper left-hand corner? Because, yeah, right, could you zoom in there? Cause that's an area I want to show you. So interestingly, in that area, Rob, which we're not doing a lot of activity. The wetland boundary is not the edge of the river. So what we showed here was the hundred-foot wetland review line, that's the dark blue line. And then if you look behind it, we included the two hundred-foot Shipog River Upland Review Area. So it's a little confusing.
Right, no, I get it.
The edge of the river is not the edge of the, uh, wetlands.
So the entire project is within the two hundred-foot Upland Review Area?
Yeah, ex, ex, except for the, uh, for, for first half of the driveway.
I'm just wondering how big the house is, bud.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pulling up a scaled plan, just stare with me for one second. Oh, four thousand square feet, the footprint. The.
I thought it was twenty.
No.
Okay.
No way, no way. The, uh, the barn at its longest point is a little over fifty feet. Uh, that's about fifteen to sixteen hundred square feet.
Hey, anybody have questions for Paul?
I, I have kind of the same one I did for the lake property, just, um, you know, like a landscaping plan. You know, to see what, how, how close everything's going to get to the, to the river.
Yeah, that's a great question, Rob, and we'll clarify that. We have Debbie Nevins, our landscape architect, working on this. Um, and I'll, uh, have her put together a, a little explanation. Cause we, we moved this house around to preserve some trees that are out there in the existing tree line that's there. But that's a, that's a great question, and we'll get that to you.
Anybody else? Does the commission feel we should hire a engineer for a pair review? And an environmentalist on this one? Because the yoga thing is right on the river.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Russ.
You guys want to do the same process I recommended for the other one? Okay, sounds good.
You did tell me you, you were going to have, I think Davies look at.
The answer, yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, well, we'll see you next month.
Sounds like a plan.
We'll be live, it will be in person.
Okay.
So everybody on the commission, if you could plan that, please?
Sure.
Okay, we are going to more new business. And let me just get our. So this was something that came up for ninety-six Hemlock Road. They had submitted a request to amend the conditions of their approval. And this is the minutes from the meeting that was in November and that was the approval. And, um, Wayne Care, he emailed earlier this evening that he may not be able to make this meeting.
Yeah, what he's asking for, Rob, if you remember when we went out and we actually saw things. We didn't see a reason really he needed to put up a silt fence along the whole wetland border based on the distance from the house. What he's asking is that requirement, which is part of the approval, be removed. In other words, he wants to modify the approval. So, um. Controls placed on the border of the wetlands. He's asking that he's not, that he's not required to do those controls based on what we discussed in the site block. Do you agree, Rob? I, I don't have a problem with it because it's leveled down there.
I, I, so we're just talking about the, it'd be the, uh, eastern portion of the property or the eastern and southern portion?
We, we required silt fence downgrade in the home and then silt fence all along the border of the wetland.
Okay, so there'd still be silt fence below the home?
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the modification that erosion control is not required along the wetland boundary. But is still required down gradient of all construction of the home.
I'll second.
All, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry to interrupt, we still discussed the pump house for, uh, Stone Ledge, which was prior to that one.
Nope, you actually, I have notes that you went right from. The residence into the pump house discussion. Unless, do you want me to circle back and do that?
Yeah, just so, we were asking for that, the pump house to be non-regulated because it's so far away, but if.
Um, I, I, I'll make a motion that the pump house is not regulated. And, and therefore a permit is not required.
But Russ, what we got, isn't the, um, the hydrologist's report attached to that application that we want to take a look at?
Well, that, that's part of the home application, Paul. That's, that's my take on it, Paul. Just so we're, we're clear. You, the water that's being extracted is part of the construction of a home, we're not considering.
That's correct. Yeah, no, I'm still providing the, we're still providing the report.
So my, my motion, assuming the amount of water being pumped is part of the home application. Cause it's part of, part of the construction of the home and not related to the pump house construction.
I think that's getting too confusing, combining the two of them in a way.
Yeah, I do too.
We were waiting to read the hydrology report and I don't want to be merging things together. That shouldn't be merged together, that's my opinion.
But Sue, legally, legally, you could build a pump house, it's not regulated. What I'm saying is, but regulated, the amount of water extract.
Right, but that, well, that's what I'm saying, is though we still haven't, the hydrology report, I thought we were waiting on that to find out. Being extracted from, and maybe I'm wrong.
See, Russ, the way I'm thinking of it as, is that, um, you know, we had the original application for the pump house that got withdrawn. And the request for the hydrology report was associated with that application for the pump house, correct?
You're right, John, I think you're right.
Paul, we're going to have to hold up on the pump house until we, till we review that report.
Okay.
True, if we denied that it can't extract that much water. Um, you see, it is complicated because he could still build the pump house if we said you could only take twenty thousand gallons a day. You know? So let's, let's just hold off on it.
Yeah, but just so everyone's, just so everyone's clear, I don't know, there's feedback, it's not coming from me. Um, none of my applications are seeking to withdraw water. We already have the wells and have the legal ability to remove the water. So just, just so everyone's clear. What, what I'm asking for is a permit to construct a pump house.
Wait, but you said legal permit? Now I'm getting confused because, sorry, Paul, I'm just curious. Withdraw the water, but is there not a limit of how much water can be withdrawn?
Well, if you, if you withdrew greater than fifty thousand gallons a day, you would have to go to the state of Connecticut. And go through their approval process, it wouldn't even, there, there, there is no local approval process once you get to that.
Paul, I totally disagree. Wetland commissions have jurisdiction over groundwater overdraft, and that's what we're trying to protect. Look at the first part of our regulations, very clear. I've had this argument before with people and I've won this argument in court. The wetlands commissions have jurisdiction over, over groundwater withdrawal. If it's over fifty thousand gallons, then it goes to DEP, very, very similar to stormwater. If it's over five acres, it, it goes, you need a DEP permit. In this case, if you're under fifty thousand, you still need to get approval from the wetlands commission. The owner who was there before him wasn't, wasn't withdrawing that much water. They were using water for a house. Um, but, but, let's not make an, an issue where there isn't, where there isn't an issue. Let's give us a chance to read the report and then we could circle back next meeting.
That's your decision.
Yep. Okay, we're on the next.
Um, we are, so, um, the next one is Denise Adams. Oh, I'm sorry, before we close up that, you have the open motion, would you like to withdraw it?
Yes, I withdraw that motion.
Okay.
Discussion, yep.
Okay. Based on discussion, okay, um. And so then we're going to move on to Denise Adams, one fifty-two South Street. They're asking to extend their permit that was granted three years ago.
For what?
It was. Um, basically, I believe for, um.
Well, if it was three years ago, it's still good, right, for another two years?
Um, it was only given for three for some reason.
Okay.
And it, and expires, uh, actually February twenty-second.
Alright, when, when do they think they'll do this for? They don't know, they're just.
They, they don't know, um.
To an extension are they looking for? Another three years?
I, I believe so.
Russ, didn't you tell me that wetland permits were now good for fourteen years?
Yes, but that, that's, uh, that's pretty recent. But the old ones are good for ten, so they really don't need, if, if we, but we, but we could limit. What they're good for, for some reason we limited this to three years. So I, I would make a motion to extend this for seven years.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Um, and then before we get on to the next topic, I do have the, uh, application for the pesticides for Yalden Pond. That we received today, would you like to do that now or at the very end?
Well, we can do that now.
Okay, let me pull that up.
So my question, Julie, is when they submit these pesticide applications to DEP, aren't they supposed to submit it to us at the same time?
Um, they are, but, um, from what I understand, after talking to, um, Zach today. He's having this issue because they're required to submit it online. Um, once it's submitted, it's gone. And so anything he can print out for the towns that they have submitted to the state is, everything is ma, is marked draft copy. So, and so that's, it's, it's a problem. So basically, everything we have in the file is basically, um, what he submitted to, to the state in previous years.
Okay.
And so this one looks a little bit different, just because of the, the new way.
They do this every year, they do it every year. Um, I, I've gone up there, I've looked at things and I, I don't see, I think this is a good use. I'm not, not in favor of pesticides, but the state allows it. The commission has parallel authority, meaning we can't deny their permit because it's the DEP permit. But we could deny, we could request that the applicant submit an application to us. And we could deny it. We could deny our app, application that they submit to us. But in order to do that, we have to prove, uh, that there's a significant harm. And in this case, I, I don't see a signi, significant harm. A significant harm would be somebody who applies to, uh, basically use. Turn a swamp into a pond through chemical means. That would be a case where the town could request the permit and then deny the permit. Because we have jurisdiction over plants i- in, in the wetland itself. Um, in this case, this has been going on for years and I don't see any issue.
Where, where is this property?
On the corner of Tofit and Schoolhouse?
It is, it's one sixty-seven Tofit.
Right.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe it is on this corner of Schoolhouse.
Yeah, and the pond, the, the road goes right al- along the pond. So when we get these, we're being notified, is what it is. We don't approve this, we don't deny, we're being notified. At that point, we either can just let it roll, which in this case I think we should. Or we could request that they submit an application to, to the wetland commission.
I, I'm just, I'm not familiar with this site, how big is the pond?
Pardon, Sue?
How big is the pond, Russ? I'm not familiar with this spot. How big is the pond, Russ? I'm not familiar with this spot.
Oh, that pond's been there forever.
No, but how big is it? Is it something?
It's not too big. It's not a big pond.
Is it something that?
It's, it's shallow and that's why there's a.
So this is a pesticide, not. Herbicide, right, for the pond?
Yeah, it's a herbicide.
Okay, so, don't we usually like try to. Still, once again, send out a letter for different ways of the ponds within reasonable sight, different ways to control it, or no?
What Karen's supposed to do, and I'll follow up with her to make sure she's still doing this. Whenever we get one of these in, she's supposed to mail a letter that we wrote years ago. Which. Tells them that there are other uh better environmental options. Like putting barley in the pond during the, during the spring. There's all, there's all kinds of things you could do. But unfortunately, we live in a world that allows this. And we don't have the jurisdiction to deny it unless there's harm. The direct harm to the wetland and we don't have proof that there would be because. They're killing plants in a pond. It's not a swamp. And they've been doing it for years with our approval. It'd be kinda hard to turn that around right now.
Okay, but I'd still, if we could recommend that a letter be sent out again.
Yeah, Julie, would you remind Karen whenever we get these, she's supposed to.
I have the letters now. I will send them out. I will send them out. Yeah, not a problem.
Hey, Russ, could we ask for someone to take a look at these applications? You know, like an environmentalist?
No, it's a deep application. It's supposed to be doing that.
But if we require them to come to the. Roxbury Wetlands Commission, we could, couldn't we?
We could if there's, there, there, there's grounds, but your grounds is not just that they're. They're applying it to a pond. Your grounds has to be very clear of.
Well, that's, that's, that's the point of hiring an expert to.
What's the expert gonna say, Rob?
I have no idea. I'm not the expert.
Well, the expert's gonna say it's a legal way to uh control aquatic. Species. So obviously there's an impact. I mean, deep knows that. When you first apply it, oxygen levels go down. Plants die. BOD goes up, you know, because there's more biological eh, 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 things, but this is something the state allows. And I personally, I think we have more on our plate than to start fighting the state. I already fought the state about, about this twenty years ago. And at that time, we didn't even need to be notified. Because Margaret Minor and I went up to deep to fight about this. They changed it where you have to notify the commission that this is being done. And the commission could go to deep and say, hey, there's a well right there, or there's something else, which is what we did. Because somebody proposed this on uh Lake Lurie. And deep, to be honest with you, doesn't want to be bothered. They just want to give these permits out.
Like most things they do.
Yeah, they bigger fish to fry, maybe, or whatever.
Yeah, they got, they gotta, you know, go out and shoot moose to get close to the highway, you know?
Well, the problem with deep is they've become a bureaucracy. And they're just all about forms and stuff now. And they don't do much to protect the environment. Quite frankly, I think these things should be reviewed by them. And they should question why this is being done every year. Cause you're not solving a problem doing this, obviously. Why not look at a way to solve the problem? Why is there a problem? Is there septic leaching in and is there high nitrogen? But this is beyond our jurisdiction, gang. Any questions? All right, Julie, next.
Okay, just to circle back, when you added it to the agenda, I had you adding it. I didn't hear the second.
Well, we don't, we don't need to add it if we're not gonna take any action.
Okay, all right, so you just talked about it. Okay, not a problem.
I mean, basically, we're notified and, and thank you for notifying us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh. All right, so let's go back. Let me find my spot here. So, finish up. Here we go. There. Okay, so here's the uh wetlands fees. That we spoke of Wednesday within the past month.
And you're saying we should look at them and change them maybe?
Um, there's semantics wise, um. Non-regulated activities. Um, such as driveways and construction are actually regulated under the regulations. Um, and so. Right, this one basically, um, we had talked about removing the non-regulated activity from no charge. Because it's not really an exempted activity.
Change that to uh inquiry form application.
Okay, that's exactly it, because that's what we were saying, we were, if we change that. Because that actually represents it better.
Right, that's what we should change. Is there anything else?
That was it.
So I'll make a motion to change. Uh, the inland wetland commission fees. Wow, effective two thousand four?
Yeah.
I mean, isn't there inflation? But, but people are paying enough, I think. I think. Um, but, but what does the commission think? Should we raise these fees? Should we go to a hundred bucks? For a regulated?
I think we should start paying the commissioners.
I second that, Rob.
Oh, boy. There's gonna be no volunteers soon, believe me. Is everybody okay with the fees?
Accounting wise, are we, is there a surplus of money?
Are you kidding me?
Well, so are we.
Paying way under.
Well, then we should, then the fee should be raised to, you know, it should be like a break even commission, right?
Well, I calculated that, Rob. You're not the only one with the numbers in your head. You would have to charge like a thousand bucks. Cause think about it, what do we get? We get thirty-four applications a year. And our, our budget is what, Julie? Like thirty grand? Something like that?
Something like that.
Yeah, so.
Well, I do have to say that the average inflation rate is about three percent per year since two thousand four. Right, so that's twenty years. Compounded yearly. We're like, we should be putting a fifty percent increase on this.
Thank God I don't own a gun.
I'm fine with it. I don't care.
Yeah, me too.
All right, so I'll make a motion to change review of exemption application to uh inquiry form application.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Now moving on, um, actually. We'll stay here for a minute. Um, it's time for John's report. Let me see if he's back in. He's been.
Yes, I'm here. Computer issues, my Mac blew up. Laptop, mic went work, so now I'm on to Chris's little iPad. Anyway, I didn't submit a written report because there really wasn't much to submit on that. The only thing I did for non-regulated, I had three permits. One for some tree cutting, one generator and one pool. So it really wasn't worth the effort to type something up for that. The only other thing that I'd like to mention is at the beginning of February, I received an email from the state. Uh, Dennis McDonald made a complaint to them about the same complaints he's done against um Mark Low. Two or three times since I've been there about his special permit and the building of his accessory apartment. Well, the state. I sent the state some copies of the minutes, some other pertinent information, some photographs. And today I got an email from them and they have determined that there is no actual water diversion violation. Nor improper action by the town I W L C. L W C. So that was good news and that pretty much sums up uh activities for the month.
Yeah, and it was good news that on all the F O I complaints against the town.
Yes.
That the town won all three. Okay. Is that it? Are we done?
Well, it's up to you if you want to do a report and then we've got the West Cog. Items seven through fourteen.
We could table that because that's Kathy's uh project.
Okay.
Unless the commission wants to continue to discuss?
I say we table it.
Yeah, I think we should table it for.
Okay.
Is that it, Julie?
That's it. You can adjourn when you'd like.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you all later.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Hi, guys. Thanks.
I still want to know like who nominated me again. You're picking on the person that's not present. That's why I have to say, have a good, everyone.
Well, Sue, I was sweating it out because I wasn't at that meeting, so, you know. Have fun in your continued role.
Have a good night.
Good night.